Are we gonna follow the same pattern as the last meeting?
Yeah.
Do the nomination of leadership and file off?
Yeah. Yeah, actually. Yeah, I got cleaned up for a hearing.
I walked in there and they were mad at me because I've been too long, so I had to come here and do this again.
Yeah.
Okay. So we are, thanks for noticing.
So we don't have a president, so we have no one calling you to order.
Yeah. So we'll call this meeting to order. It's the first meeting of the zoning commission. And we're April 7th, 2022, in the Bonner County Administration Building. So first off, we'll do our pledge of allegiance in that right there. Everyone in this team, starting on the file off with this way, Scott.
Uh, Matt Wood Scott.
He wants.
You get the model, Frank Winkler.
It's a, we have a quote, and all present, we did have one resignation. I think the fifth member resigned. But this week, or last week, same thing. Yeah, we're doing that a little bit shortly. We don't have any other changes in the agenda or in the announcements, so just having our business is to elect the chair. So that process is nominations first. So we don't do the second motion, anything like that, just just still who your nominee for chair, then we'll see the motion. After that, starting in order, who's nominated first, go to the chair, and then the vice chair.
I nominate Mr. Marco. I was gonna say, have any of you done this before? Probably with a better chair than me.
Yeah, I mean. Can we ask, does anybody have experience with job rules of order? Anybody ever done anything like that before? Um. I've been part of this before, so. Okay.
Knowledge of it, it's not practically.
It's okay. It's not too hard to pick up, so if it, it's not a, and there are no hard and fast rules, they're just a, a general guidelines, they don't have to be. Um, they're not, they're not codified, so it'll be okay. And remember, there's only one nomination.
Yep.
Who's in the motion, and you all agree?
Make the motion.
I'd make the motion that I be the chair.
Wait, wait, second?
Second.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so now we're the nominee chair. And nominations for vice chair?
Nominate Matt Wood Scott.
I second the nomination.
There are nominations for those. Okay, we don't, do the motion?
I'd make the motion to nominate Matt Wood Scott as vice chair.
Second?
I'll second that.
You all agree?
Aye.
See, there you go. And who's nominated for the chair? You know, the general things, the honest business I would always talk about, file off, which I drafted, so if you have a kind of over there, my experience, sure, this I want to.
Mr. Val, please go over the bio logs.
Yeah, thank you. So what I did is took the bio logs from the planning committee, made some minor changes to them, took out some things that hadn't been used, or hadn't been, that method. Um, I included in this, this draft, we sent out to you, anything in red, as you said, I would give it back. Anything in red and white that is changes that were made during the planning commission meeting, several of them were just tidied and treated back. And then others were suggested changes, so I put it back to you guys tonight for adoption, so. The text amendment that created the planning and the zoning commissions lines out the duties of each of those commissions, I didn't reiterate that, I just referenced the code, that's in the section one. Procedures and membership, they changed too much, just a note, the tenure corresponds with the text change again, so we have April 1st to March 31st. Which is different than our calendar, calendar year, but we do have a general like that. So the terms are set by the, by the tech, or by the resolution that was adopted there. The board setting to be able to determine, and after we return it, it's three years from now. This section here talked about absences, so there was some discussion on Tuesday night with, um. With the planning commission, and this is what we recited was a better solution to how to, how to talk about absences from the board, so feel free to read over that. I don't know if you wanna get, if you guys wanna really read it back.
We actually had a little bit of debate on this, this clause on Tuesday. I'm trying to find the right language to just reflect the, the goals of attendance. So if there's serial absences, unexplained absences, um, there was first a, um, I think we had a number in mind, if it's a certain number happened. Um, but, you know, I think that the planning commission recognized that sometimes that many members of the absence could be excused, and that can become kind of burdensome at times. And so I recommend, I recommended at that time, and the second sentence there that says, you know, gives it the discretion to the chairman to recognize serial, um, absences as a basis for a recommendation to the board commissioners for the new one. Um, this dovetails with section 3.5, which is from state code, and says that unit commissioners can remove cause, as opposed to be, uh, like an at-will employee, um, like I am for the county. So, um, this was the language that they adopted, and it was what I recommended to you.
What's your rule for?
My name's Bill Wilson, and I'm the prosecutor. I haven't, I'm not just some random guy.
He's standing off the street.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I will, as soon as you guys adopt this stuff, then I'll give you guys, I'm here to give some interlocutor comments, just some, I'm looking at a lot of rules. Um, and then some open meeting stuff, some conflict of interest things, just to get you guys only in the right direction, so.
Okay, and are you present at all of these?
Not all. Um, I am Milton and his staff are present at all of them, and they're the ones like that, like really the nuts and busts, and they keep everything moving. Um, sometimes if we have any particular file that Milton and I have been working on, there's question on that, I'm gonna show up and be here and advise somebody if that's necessary.
Okay.
But I, I, I do, I save the interruption for, if anyone wants to mic. Okay, any changes, do you guys want to make to this, the same program?
I thought that was a good change, yeah.
Good. The other thing we found out at the end of planning and zoning, there was no, there was nothing in the bio logs talking about workshops, and having presented workshop, having running workshop. So we added, you know, we have a workshop in section four, which is convenient meeting, um, so that's the only changes to that. Conducting a hearing, so we have a hearing where we, the party to public comment and workshops, which we know, that's kind of the biggest difference. Hearing if you're making a decision, workshops you're talking about, going without making a decision, um.
They both involve public, right?
Absolutely, so they're, they're all public meetings, but like, you know, we have to do all our decision making and discussing in the public.
Is there ever a, like, executive session that we're going to be voting to?
Very rarely. Um, I will cover that when we talk about open meetings in general. There have been similar cases where you need to do that, almost entirely usually reserved for the petitioners, but there are some rare cases where you might not. With section 5.5 and section 6.5 correspond with how we have typically, we have hearings and workshops in the past. And you, it's not weird, we have a lot of them, in fact. I think if we try to fill this out, I don't think that we would, you know, have a full class.
Yep, 6.2, 2.6, 6.2. Nine degrees.
Let's go to section 7, which is 12 dash 267.
Yeah, and, uh. Well, they, they, they just first, the one thing that I, um, I notice is for us, uh, there's a different spot. But, right after says testimony must be specific, I get, but that's a, but instead, on the step number seven, says, in all statements by members of public comment given, the chairperson shall call for discussion or information. When that happens, we feel that applicant may hold. And the sort of thing about that, you know, what is, how does that change on what we typically have been doing? And the answer is, it gives that applicant, that applicant service, and we apply that applicant to the court of justice. So it's brief.
So you're saying, I'm sorry, I don't have the code in front of me, I think that the code calls for discussion and doesn't discuss for money? Or we?
No, it didn't, it was for.
It reverses those.
Yeah, yeah.
So what's the applicant? Here are your guys' deliberations.
Well, not deliberations, they call, call for discussion.
Discussion, okay.
And so about, because I've been making these where, you know, we're in a closed, for any testimony. And then a commission will start discussing things on some pressure, maybe, uh, as an interest to, and about happen to live in the room. It's one more step for that applicant to go ahead and make sure they've covered all the bases, so it's been kind of a presentation.
Okay, um, well, it's in the code, it's in the code. Um, I would also say too, that during deliberation, um, the, the board will close public comment, but during deliberation, the board reserves the right to ask questions. The board does, um, the applicant.
Can ask an applicant question.
The board can ask, deliberations can, um, the board has the discretion to do what it wishes, just essentially like a courtroom. Uh, where the judge, um, is the process of deliberation, if they have a further question, you allow that to happen in the past.
Okay.
Um, so.
I don't mean, I mean, we split here, there's something that I've seen, and then I, I kind of spread that part with the group, and we're in, I thought, right? I would give that applicant, who's in the red, personally. So maybe between bullet point five and six, there should be, uh, go into discussion between the commission.
Yeah, it says, yeah, it says, I believe, it says the chairperson shall call for discussion in the commission.
Like discussion separate from the election?
And that's what I was gonna say is, the one speaking point behind that is, whatever you discussed in that discussion would have to be rehashed again in deliberation, right? Um, well, yes.
Potentially.
I mean, the truth is that the record is kind of viewed as whole, right? So, um, deliberation is usually saved for the end, because that's when you've got your deliberation, right? But, um, you can, um, I routinely, when I'm citing the record, um, can reference comments and other things that are made by, or throughout the process. Um, so, um, I wanna, I wanna follow the staff, whatever we have mentioned, I have in front of me. Um, but, uh. As long as what, as long as these rules reflect what we have in the statute, then they might work, that's, I think that's what we have to be right, because that's what we're saying, so. So, and I'll have staff up there, because typically we include a slide summary of this information at the beginning of each hearing, that says this is how we're gonna conduct the hearing. So I'll make sure I talk to staff, and they can have to read that slide then, quickly. Um, so workshops, like I mentioned before, the biggest difference is other comments aren't required to be received, so I left it up to the chair. Um, this section here, so chair states the nature of the workshop, the test is where we see. Because workshops can really vary, I left this fairly vague, who's gonna present and whatnot, so if we ever come to a workshop, we can kind of discuss it beforehand, and, uh. Your question, I love.
Since we're definitely dealing with quasi judicial, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, in my mind, think about how we would, we'd have many, kind of workshop.
You probably, I, I don't, I don't think you guys will, but this is, these rules are, were drafted to have, you know, for both commissions, and you're right. So, um, one thing I'll get into when we talk about the difference between the planning commission and the zoning commission is that, um, planning commission is based more of a, a big picture legislative type comp plan. Um, legislative scales, zone changes, whereas you guys are going to be dealing with what we call quasi judicial files. Those are the ones that affect a particular piece of property, and a particular landowner, and they have due process rights. So, um, these rules got, um, is correct, um, that I don't expect you to have workshops for, uh, zoning files, but I don't know. Well, I moved tonight to a workshop, right? So, we'll, we'll have those kind of. I think it's better to have it, have it available, whether or not it's actually used, we'll have to see, we'll figure that out if it does. We'll, we'll do an nomination of offices next year, whenever we do it, so, that kind of line for that place. Uh, that's all we have. I took out a section on, yeah, it's a minute of stuff in, in section, I think that was, probably, either, but, uh, this is in a different, I don't know. Other than the Jim's, we talked about tonight, we have a, 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 kind of a, 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 a.
Uh, the board, it's referenced, capital B board, is that the, uh, commissioners?
Yeah.
Thinking about what I read earlier.
In general, typically when capital B board is talking about board term protection.
Got it.
Right, somewhere in the west, I think.
Uh, they're like at the top, section 11. Okay. And who's John Smith's chair? That's okay.
I'm gonna be on the chair. So this should be adopted by, uh, motion, yeah? So, chairman, I know we, we accept the, uh, bio logs as, uh, as, as changes, but the new, uh.
I'll second the motion.
Well, actually, some of those probably shouldn't, some of those, I second the motion.
Okay.
I second the motion. So at this point, the chair will call for a vote?
The chair calls for a vote.
Say on, say.
On their side. Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, I think we're ready to do some interlocutor stuff then? Anything else? Hi, guys, well, my name is Bill Wilson, and I work in the prosecutor's office. Um, I'll make sure to come over and introduce myself before the meeting, so, I got just some random dude who walked in here. Um, but, uh, my, my role in the prosecutor's office is to advise the public department and all things. Um, text amendments, um, and pub, and public meetings, and everything in between, up to litigation, uh, if people dispute the decisions that you guys make. So, when you guys are sitting in this capacity, I represent ID, and I would like to offer myself as a resource for you guys. Um, whenever you, um, I don't know, um, email address, but it's the same one that we all have for public email address, bill@wilson@bonnercountyid.gov. Um, and I just invite emails or questions you guys may have as this process goes along. Um, you can have a lot to digest as you get into this role, I probably don't have to have it on the map right away. Um, but I'm gonna suggest a few different resources for you that you might be able to consult as you get your feedback here. Um, and I had asked Milton on Tuesday to supply all of you guys with a copy of the open meetings manual. Um, it's produced by the Idaho Attorney General's Office, and this version, I think, was from 2019, so it's still relatively recent, no, it hasn't changed that much. Um, will, will you confirm that you sent this, the words, guys? I know you sent it to the, uh, the last, uh, Tuesday, but just wanna make sure that we're getting that out there. I don't know, it's, whatever the case. Did we send this to, this crew?
Yes, they're all in the, in their group, in their things, they're, they're fine.
Okay. Well, that manual is kind of a handy resource, especially if you're not familiar with, um, dealing, doing business, um, in the public, where we are required to do um, everything that's available for, there for public consumption. And so, um, there's just a couple, there's a lot of stuff in that manual, not all of it is relevant to you guys, some of it is though, and, um, I wanted to go through a little bit of that. And, let's see if I still have this pulled up from the last time. Okay. So we'll touch on a few different things, but one of the, the most important ones is that we understand the definition of what a meeting is, and the importance of a forum. Um, we, in order to do business, we need a forum. In this case, because you have five members, that just, uh, it would typically be, uh, three with a failed commission, still three with four. Um, it is just a majority of the then seated members of the board. Um, so in order to, uh, pass any motion, or, or even meet, and just to decide something, you need to have that majority there. Um, this means that when a majority is not there, it is not a meeting, and that's relevant when we talk about what constitutes an illegal public meeting. Um, we already kind of alluded to this before, but you guys are deciding what we call quasi judicial files, right? These are the variances, the subdivisions, conditional use permits, and rezones that people bring in front of you. And when people do that, they have procedural due process rights. And that is that they need the opportunity to, uh, both, to know and to rebut evidence. And so, um, if evidence is taken by one of you guys in a meeting that doesn't constitute a forum, that's not publicly noticed, that's a problem. So this is one of the first things that I can, can tell you a pitfall to avoid, and that's the, um, acceptance of what we call ex parte communication. So that is any information that, um, is, is presented to you outside of the public hearing of this setting, um, that's a problem. And the reason for that is what I just mentioned, um, that, that interested parties who have due process rights, um, leave the ability to, um, know the information upon which you are making your decisions. So invariably, what can happen is that, um, you know, you engage in a conversation with someone outside of the process, you receive an email or a phone call, and they want to discuss or try to persuade you on a matter that's pending before this body for approval. Doesn't mean it's, it's not, it's not a fatal error, all you need to do is, um, do your best to bring that to the entire board. So if it's an email, um, when we have that happen, we just, I, I suggest that you just forward it to the planning staff, they can then put it, and make it part of the record, um, for whatever file that was, problem solved. Um, or if it's a phone call, just make a note of it yourself, and then at the next available hearing, um, you know, the, the chair will typically, um, ask if there's been any, you know, any conflicts or any other things that need to be disclosed, you can say at that time, you know, I did receive some information about this file outside of the public hearing process, here it is. So once you put that in the public record, you cured the error, and you're good to go, right? Um, Rob's rules of the order. Oh, go for it, yeah. By the way, yeah, whenever you have a question.
So with the, uh, planning and zoning kind of split.
Yeah.
I'm imagining that we're gonna need to do that, if they're meeting on Tuesdays, get that in front of them, maybe an email before then, rather than wait for, for the commission meeting, or if, or does it matter, like, if it's affecting both sides or not?
Okay, so, well, I guess, the type of file I would imagine goes before both you guys, is when someone asks for a.
Change.
Comp plan change and a rezon, right? Yeah, so, um, we would just wait to hear, I think, well, correct me if I'm wrong here, but if that were the case, are you guys, are you gonna line them up like that, back to back? You wanna do that?
It's like a month apart.
Month apart, okay, so that, they, you would have plenty of time to give whatever their decision was. Obviously, that would have a huge impact on, you know, if the comp plan was changed or not, whether you might approve that particular rezon. So, yeah, you would definitely wanna wait to hear that information.
With, I didn't, I don't wanna, it, it, let's say the planning commission denies a comp change, it was just there.
Yeah.
How can it even be heard in front of the zoning commission?
So, so what, what's gonna happen is, the way we're gonna run it right now, we have a couple in process, is, uh, the, the comp plan change will go to the planning commission, and then they make a recommendation to the board, it will go to the board. And then, after, based on that recommendation, then, or based on the board's decision, we will schedule a zone change here.
Okay, so it's possible that it will maybe come to zoning, yes?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And remember, you know, I, I would say that, I guess, we'll still have to be, by now, this is gonna work, right?
Right, that's true.
Um, anyways, when you have a comp plan change and a zone change going hand, hand in hand together, um, that's, that's kind of an implicit acknowledgement that the comprehensive plan needs to be changed in order to, for accordance with that plan, in order for the reason to happen, right? So you would think that if the board denied the comp plan change, then applicant would realize that. Um, you know, the case law does actually say that, um, you know, like the land use map is just one part of the comp plan. And so you could theoretically have accordance with the comp plan, even if the, the land use map was, was, didn't, didn't reflect that particular use there. Um, so I think.
Correct.
You could theoretically still have a hearing if there was a denial of that comp plan change. It, I would, I would suspect that you would be likely to deny, but you wouldn't have to, it's still, for due process rights, you would still have to, if they wanted to take it to you guys, you'd still have to hear it and make a decision. Um, can I answer the questions before I?
I think so, yeah, okay, you, you, on those, on those types of things where we're looking at a, a comp amendment and a zone change. So the comp amendment, of course, even though it's an applicant initiated one parcel request, that part's not considered quasi judicial?
That's legislative. All comprehensive plan changes are legislative.
Okay.
Um, and so, uh, we've, we've had to distinguish between those two things, when the old, the old paradigm, um, when the, the planning and zoning commission is one. First, the first thing we would do is take up the comprehensive plan change, and I advise the board, remember, this is legislative, so, um, my, my views are very different.
Yep.
Um, and you're just looking at the goals, objectives, and, um, you really have a lot of leeway there. And then once, once we go to the zone change, now we're trying to apply the criteria, and it's, it's a lot more rigid, you know? Yeah, that's consistent with. So all the stuff that, I mean, just for a second, while I'm thinking of the rocks, listen. Um, this is, every, every chairman, it seems a little demanding at first, but we'll soon pick it up. Um, how to have these, these rules and, and standards that become very key in, I would say this, every chairman is a little different. Um, I know some chairman, uh, who have, my, they have, like, the tenor of the audience sometimes reflects the chairman. And so I would encourage you to be, like, firm but fair. Um, some of our, you know, some, some of our commissioners, some of our boards and commissioners, they get a little antagonistic, and they tend to get in a back and forth conflict. I don't know what that means, but we all, we all be talking about, um, and, and that's okay, that's their personality. Um, but my experience, and I think the planning staff, the rect, who acknowledge that, these rules can get really contentious, and can be full, full of anything. And if, if the chairman sets the tenor, the tone of the, of the hearing early on, and, and sets out the rules, right? I'm going off script here, this is just my two cents. Um, tell us everybody, look, you've got three minutes, you can share your time with somebody else, I understand that you care a lot about this, but we're trying to recreate a program setting as far as professionalism goes, so please try to respect that. And, and if you go outside those bounds, I'll try to get you back there. And if you cannot, you know, get yourself to do that, I reserve my task of leaving. Instead of like that, like about the chairman, for a day, like, that's the way I would do it, and I think that you understand the gravity of what we're doing, trying to make important decisions. Um, and, and it keeps it down, um, but if you don't keep it down, and it starts to get salty, like, right away, then the whole thing goes, it can get pretty bad. With, with the really contentious ones. So that's just my recommendation to you, is just to kind of set the bar, the clear expectation, and I think, I think you'll really get some benefit from that. All right. All right, back over to meeting. All right, back over meetings. We talked about quorum, we talked about ex parte communication, we talked about those things. The actual notice and hearing procedures where we publish notice for your hearings and other things, I won't get into that with you guys. Those are important parts of the open meeting law, but they are handled by, by staff. And so they are typically the ones who are gonna make those things happen in the background. And they do a really good job of that, so I wouldn't worry too much about it. Although it is in that manual, and so if you're curious and you'd like to see how these things are supposed to go, I encourage you to read it. The next thing that I want to talk about with you is, is conflicts of interest. You guys are subject to some very strict conflict of interest rules by virtue of being on the board that you're on. By your background, there is an entire chapter called Ethics in Government, and that relates to public officials as, as a whole, public employees. We all are subject to those rules. But there's a specific statute for members of a planning commission or zoning commission, and that's, that's you guys. And so we'll just get to this comment section here. Comment sections, item of board sixty-seven dash sixty-five zero six. All right, so there it goes, just takes about minutes. Okay. So I'm gonna read it, because some of this language is really strict. And we had a couple of members of the planning commission last, two or this past couple of nights ago, asked some great questions about this and then how it applies. I think I'll see if I can try to get to that same place with you guys. Let's get the first sentence here. A member or employee of a joint commission or planning commission shall not participate in any proceeding or action with a member or employee or his employer, business partner, business associate or any person related to him by affinity or consignability within a second degree has an economic interest in the procedure or action. Actual or potential interest in any proceeding shall be disclosed at the action. So the purposes of this section, participation means engaging in activities which constitute deliberations pursuant to the Open Meetings Act. No matter, a governing board or planning and zoning commission with a conflict of interest shall participate in any aspect of the decision-making process concerning a matter of any conflict of interest. And a may violation in section shall be misdemeanor. So the, the last little bit there already sets the bar higher because the General Ethics in Government Act has penalties in different terms, but this one actually says no violations misdemeanor. So kind of raises the stakes a little bit. So there are parts of the statute that kind of draw your attention. Says that a member or employee of a governing board, commission or joint commission shall not participate in any proceeding or action. And we're left to, further down, we talk about what participation means, and then there might be some room to play on that. But I have always taken a very conservative approach with this one. And that is, first of all, the easy stuff. If you have what's considered a potential conflict of interest, not even an action, just a potential personal benefit or a benefit that would accrue for one of your close family members in a second degree, that's like, you know, grandkids, kids, parents, grandkid, or grandparents and siblings. There's affinity, which we talked about on Tuesday as well, so through marriage, I think. Have one of those, potential conflict of interest, you cannot participate sitting as a member yourself. I, I hold the position that not participate as a sitting board member, but you can also not participate by recusing yourself and, and just taking your three minutes of time as a member of a citizen. I say that because it says, that second sentence says that you shall not participate in any proceeding or action. And can I, in a reasonable minds can disagree on that, but my recommendation is always to err on the side of caution, especially when the penalty could be a criminal misdemeanor. I would not want to put myself in that position. If you feel so compelled to participate in the public hearing process that concerns you, you can decide your position on this board and then participate with any other member. You know, a much easier option is just to find somebody else who will state that, that information. Or you let that person say it. There's nothing telling the court, it says you can't do that. But that would be the safest approach, and that's what I recommend. I recommend it on Tuesday, and I'll do it again here. Yes?
What happens if one of our family members within the second degree where that is? And we're actually representing that family to bring a file forward? Because my, always my understanding is we have to recuse ourselves, obviously. But we also have that ability to go ahead and bring a file forward as a, as a
That's the same, so Commissioner Bailey, last, on Tuesday, asked the same type of question. And my, my opinion stands, I just think that participation, the term participation means engaging in activities which constitute deliberations pursuant to the Open Meeting Act. But deliberations implies that deliberations will be, you know, as, as officials. And then further up, it says you can't participate in any proceeding or action. So there's, like I said, there is a little bit of room for disagreement in what the statute, whether the statute prohibits what you're asking for. I just err on the side of caution and recommend that you don't do that. Now, it's only a recommendation. If you felt, if you felt like that was incorrect, I say, I say the same thing to the board of commissioners all the time. You don't have to accept my advice, you could go against it. But you would be, you know, you would suffer then, you'd be putting yourself at the risk of, of what the statute says could happen.
Let me, let's say right now, I'm an applicant on a text amendment.
Right.
Here, I'm representing the family member, I'm herself, yes, as, as a, yeah, but it's legislative. It's not a clause judicial, it's a legislative file. So it's not gonna ever be in front of the zoning commission. Am I not allowed to speak? Because I am the applicant in front of the planning and intervention board and
You can speak, you can speak, I'll see. It's a good question, because I was gonna say, shall not participate in any proceeding or action. It does seem to imply that it's only in front of the board of which you're a member. That's a good question, I might want to reserve, I might say, you know, I'm not to confront it, just so I don't give you a shotgun answer that I later regret. But I do, the way I've always interpreted this is, it's in front of the, it's in front of the board that you sit on.
Right, because I've, I've read some of the things that have reflected as commissioners sitting in his official capacity.
Right.
And so if you're not sitting in that official capacity, I can't help but imagine the legislative, you know, the legislative never intended a sitting commissioner not to file those own land use applications during his tenure on a commission.
To another commission?
Or in commission. That, that, a, a sitting commissioner should be allowed to go ahead and bring their own land use applications. Obviously, they have to accuse themselves.
Right.
But I don't know if the legislative intent is ever to say, no, you can never sit on there if you're gonna ask for a comp plan change.
That doesn't mean you can't sit on it, it just means that you can't bring it yourself, right? I mean.
Yeah, but you would participate by even signing that application as a property owner.
Well, maybe, the, I, I also, I do think that even if, let's just, we're not on legislative intent. Even if you recuse yourself and then speak on behalf, on your own behalf, just the fact that you have personal relationships and you have the gravitas of being a commissioner, everybody knows that you've accused yourself, but you're still speaking. And maybe, I think, not to let your personal relationships and kind of issue on the board, still. So this is a position that I've had now for, pretty consistently for, ever since I've been here. So again, that's, that is what it is. What's up?
There's a lot of six dollar talk going on here. So there's one, if I come in here and I want to make a zone change, do I simply ask someone else to represent that? Recuse myself, sit in the audience and say nothing and let someone else represent the, what I want to have changed?
You could do that, you could, you could resign.
I could resign.
Or you could wait until your tenure is up and not reply.
Or you could just do it and take the risk of getting a risk.
Yes, or you could do it against advice.
Well, have a, have a project rep.
He's just an attorney that's giving you
Yeah, a project rep, a project rep could do it for you in sweat. A project representative from a professional surveyor would, would, to those people. All right. Would do that. And again.
What he's saying is the Idaho code is very loose here. And it's not, it's, it's not like, I don't think it's written very well. And it seems that somebody serving in the capacity of, like, service should still be able to represent themselves in a public forum, is what I would say. And that'd be my argument, like, I wouldn't have any problem doing it. And, you know, like, at the same time, he's saying though, by doing so, you may end up in a misdemeanor if you are conflicted and being wacky or whatever else, you know. So his job is to make sure you or this place doesn't get into trouble.
Right, my job is to present you with my
Interpretation.
And that's all it ever is. And there are times when, when the board accounting commissioners, usually they take my advice, but not always. And that's okay, that doesn't offend me or anything, that's just, sometimes it happens. I wish you all, thanks, okay? Great. So I did more, this is very different than the fact that we have this standard. It's very different for you guys. Like, when the board accounting commissioners, sitting in a, in a, not talking to the board's friends. They can actually disclose a conflict and then still participate. It doesn't say that they have to be removed from the process, but here you guys have a very different standard, so.
And this was revised, I'm sorry, this was revised in nineteen? This piece here, the sixty-seven, or is that code early?
The last time was July first.
Two thousand six. On the, the, the two thousand, the twenty nineteen reference, that was to the Open Meetings, man.
Okay. So maybe that's something as, you know, we should be cleaned up or maybe looked at, you know, like, because it is, you know, I just look at, like, that's bad law. It's so broad that, you know, it would be nice to, you know, have it black and white, like, you know. Anyways.
Good luck, good luck asking the state legislature to make that.
Let me know those.
I got, I got a question, Bill. You know, I've lived in Bonham County for forty-eight years and been a contractor. I know a lot of people.
Right.
And, you know, I don't have any, you know, ideas to do anything in the future, to bring anything before the board, but I do, just the fact that, I mean, I know the Lynn Scotts, I know Frank Lynn Scott, known him for years. You know, if, just because I know a person doesn't mean that I can't.
No, not at all, that's okay, just knowing somebody or even just being friends with somebody, totally not, not a problem.
It has to be a relationship or
Yes, either it has to be someone
That has some benefit from that.
Yeah, it has to be, yeah, community benefit, it has to be a benefit. And it has to accrue to, you yourself, your employer, your business partner, your business associate or any person related to you. So if you're in business with somebody, yeah, you can't, you can't do that. But if it's just somebody you know, this is not there.
Yeah, that's what I mean, that would be able to
And I've given that exact same advice. I had this, this exact same, Commissioner McDonald asked me this question on a recent reason. He knew the applicant, but they had no business relationship at all, they were not familiar, like, they were part of the same family. They just happened to know each other. And they had had some, went to some parties together and stuff in the past. No problem. If that were, if that were the standard, you really couldn't do anything, because anybody who's been around couldn't, couldn't work on files, yes.
So is there, I've employed hundreds of people in this county. And is there, I, I am fine just recusing myself at any given time, I'm just curious, is there a statute, is there a time, like, where it's been ten years since that guy worked for me? Or if, if it has been, I've had tons of business partners here.
That's a great question, I would consider, I would say that it's current. The way that I read it, it does say, a member or employee or his employer, business partner, business associate.
So if you're not currently business associate?
If you're currently in business with the person or if they're currently your associate, no. But if that's, if that relationship is over, and you, you have no, like, you're not gonna stand to make any money from the project.
Sure.
I'd say that you're probably good to go there.
Okay. Tried a lot of people, then I come back and hey, this guy was hard on me.
Again, I just kind of emphasize that when you, when you have a, when you see a file that's coming to you and you have questions, email Bill and ask him that question and let him, let, let him, you know, he'll go and look at case law relating to that and give you an opinion. And that's what protects you.
It does, so I, so again, like, with, with Commissioner McDonald, who is just on top of my act, I did agree. He, as soon as he, the file came through, he was like, he sent me the email and said, I do know this person, you know. And, and I said, okay, well, here's the statute, and sent him this exact statute and said, here's the language that we care about. Do you have a, do, do you, or is he a business partner? Or is there a member of your family that could potentially benefit from this file? If, if this file were approved? And he said, no. And I said, okay, well, then based on the statute, it's my opinion that you do not have a conflict and you can proceed, you can, you can participate. And so it's, it's actually really best to do it by email like that. So we have that very clear record of give and take. And because our purpose is to to weed out the ones where you can't participate, but also to provide trust to people so they know that the guys who are making the decisions are disinterested. So treating that one formally is definitely a way to go. Okay? All right, so I covered, most of the stuff that I covered at the last meeting, and I'll do more of the Rob's rules. You guys have any other follow-up questions for me? You don't have to, it's not a now or never type thing, like I said, now that you know my clients, you can email me and we can, we can talk about whatever you need to.
Rob's rules, is there something that, is there gonna be a script that I can just follow? Or should I read something in advance?
We have some of that, you know, point our staff. Don't you guys give some guidelines for every presentation and says how that works? If not, we can work on something for you. I don't know if we have that.
Or is this something I can just jump on YouTube and
Yeah, definitely, and then you can actually Google Rob's rules of order and you'll see how things are supposed to go.
Okay.
You'll find in practice that we're not, like, hyper rigid with them. But at least it's hard for the pace and for the hearings to continue on.
You know, you want to look for the Cliff Notes, because it's like that three hour page.
Yeah, yeah, don't get overwhelmed with it. Also, I actually find that, I, I find that hyper technical Rob's rules are horrible. People that do that, it's, it's just makes, it makes life difficult. But it does, people have a general expectation of, you know, kind of, and it also helps project the chair's authority a little bit. When you're saying like, okay, now I'll open discussion for X, or I'm sorry, your three minutes have passed, you know, like, you're kind of just keeping it spooked, yeah, so. I'm sure we can help you get the handle on that. Okay? Thanks, guys, welcome.
Thanks, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Bill.
You're gonna have some fun, I know it.
Oh, yeah.
Milton's messenger, I think, yeah.
Milton died at six thirty, he's wearing a beard.
It is, isn't it?
There it is, there. You guys, it's switched over here. Except this is a little All right. That's loading. And so appreciate you guys submitting applications and going through this process. This is, this will be a lot of fun. We're, we're really busy. And last year we held I can't remember, a hundred and twenty-six files that went to the planning and zoning commission. So by splitting this, that would have meant that a hundred files still would have come to the zoning commission and twenty files would have gone to the planning commission. So you're still gonna see the, you're still gonna see all our files, still have, and so we've been, we originally, I originally told staff that I wanted to see, uh, uh, three files a night for a while, and so they started scheduling four, and then now we're at five. So. Yeah. Um, and so we, we may be at four or five for probably a couple of months. Right now, we're scheduling hearings. If somebody came in today and wanted a conditional use permit, turned in a complete application and it was ready to go to hearing, it wouldn't be scheduled till July, the first meeting in July. So that's how far out we are with files. We have about sixty-five files that are in some sort of process. We go to public hearing. So it's a busy office. There's, uh, there's eighteen in our office right now. Um, we, uh, there's, there's eight of us planners working on different files and different types of things, so along with the comprehensive plan. Um, did we get the code up yet? I wanted to. I don't know what helps or not. I'm trying to show screen, you know, so. Cause then I'm having to. Culture all the time. Is that good? Okay. So the, the main, I just wanna just real, real quick review some of this stuff. It's a lot of information. You, you'll have a, you'll, you'll have a drive, a zoning drive in the file where you can go in and see each meeting coming up and you can see the, each of the applications and all the information. Um, you, you can, we'll look at it now if you were interested. You can go to the Bonner County website, go to the planning department. Um, and under current projects, um, these, these are the files. Now, the amendments aren't coming to you, but the, the zone changes are. So you can see all of the files, our conditional use permits that are scheduled, uh, the, uh, some of this needs to be updated. Uh, minor land divisions and short plots are administrative files. The vacations go straight to the board. Short plots are administrative, uh, but the variances are, are heading your way. Um, and then of course the zone changes. So, and there's some old stuff up there still, cause there's still things going on with some of these old files. But that, as we send them out to agency review, they, they start there. Um, Title twelve, so, uh, when you, when you go to the website, when you go to the website, uh, you can, you can click on revised code. And that brings up the revised code. Title twelve is the code that we work with. Um, chapter two is the, the different file type procedures. So if somebody's doing a zone change or a conditional use permit or variance, special use permits are pretty rare, planning unit developments, uh, we've got a few of those coming. And so those are the, those are the procedures. That's where we go when the applicant comes to us and says, how do I fill out an application? What do I do? Those are the code sections that we'll go to, uh, for initial. And then, and then we also go into the, the zoning code, uh, the different districts that the, that the county has, and then the use provisions. And we go through, we work with the public and go through, you know, what, what's allowed in the commercial area, you know, what's allowed in the commercial use table based on the zoning district. So all this stuff is, is here. Um, you can, you can review it there. There are some development standards, not everything requires a development standard, but there are some things there. There's just, there's a lot in here that, uh, that folks don't know about. We, we refer to it often as the Chinese fortune teller. We, you know, have a dip, pick a color, then go here, and go here, and go here. That's the way, that's the way zoning codes can be, is, is just like that. Um, what, what we'll do with, with staff for these first few files or first few meetings is we'll have staff present a little bit about the file type that they're presenting. And, and they'll spend a little bit of time going over, uh, you know, conditional use permit and some of the things that they review to help you understand and gain an understanding of, of the standards of a conditional use permit. A conditional use permit is an interesting file because, um, the, the use has been contemplated for the zone that it is in. And, and the purpose of the conditional use permit is to mitigate, uh, some of the standards that are in the code to help it to fit better in the neighborhood. Okay? And so there's, there's things that we don't understand about the file sometimes until it comes to a public hearing. Because neighbors will show up and tell us things about the area that we didn't know. And so that's why the public hearings are valuable, is the information we gain from the public sometimes is more than we were able to gain from agencies and, and from our own files, okay? So, um, so there's just, there's just a lot to go over and a lot to learn and it's, I'm just a big believer in diving and, and just start going through the process and, and learn as we go. Ask lots of questions, don't be afraid to speak out. Um, yeah, feel free to, to call the officer, to come in and, and meet with one of the planners if you have questions. Um, in regards to specific projects, again, you need to be careful to avoid the exportate communication. It's not likely that we will spend time going over a specific file with you one-on-one because of that exportate communication. But we are able to answer questions if you have them or direct you.
Typically, we, we do go in and send us a file, you know, and drive it, and send it to our projects and stuff like that.
Yep.
We can say, oh shit, I know that. I might have seen issue, you know?
True.
Bob, what help? Like, how long has it taken for the staff report to be sent out? Prior to me.
I want to.
Always, always in seven days, Brad.
At least seven days.
We had a meeting on Thursday, so we're Thursday prior. I'm always getting out before the end of business, so.
So what we're doing is we're following the code, right? When we, when we process those reports. Uh, the staff report, we try to have, we try to have it completed. The goal is, so like for, for next week, the file goes out to you guys on Thursday, next Thursday. So the staff reports that have to go out next Thursday are due tomorrow by staff. And then we will review them. Jake will review those staff reports, uh, looking for any errors or whatever. And then, uh, and then Jen will finish prepping out those files and they will become available to you and to the applicant, to the public on, on Thursday morning. So.
At the same time they get uploaded to the website, that's what moves right there. You guys have the public also asking about the orders.
Yeah. If, if there's a, we, we had a request with some of the previous files that we were wanting to get those out to the commission ahead of time. Um, I'm not sure if we were able to do that or not. We might have gotten it out ten days ahead.
I think it was two days earlier or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't very much. So, uh, also, also the staff reports have become a lot more robust, they're a lot longer, a lot more information, I know. So, um, there, there's a lot there.
And if you, the, the trouble with trying to get staff reports out earlier is we, we backwards plan fairly far on agencies. So we give agencies so much time and we give staff so much time to, to review that agency comment incorporated their staff report. So if we're saying, hey, next meeting, we want it three days early, we're about, you know, four and a half weeks behind where we should have been. We get that done earlier, because that's just kind of how long that process can take with all of our residency requirements and kind of, you know, that stuff. It's kind of, it's a lengthy process.
Kind of a long process.
It is fun.
It's good, but it's never application.
Right. Oh, yeah.
All the different groups to make their call in each. The purposes of this commission and the things that we're right in here, talking about it, maybe it's a lot of level to review, I think it's in file amendment prepared by staff, and all that stuff is just kind of ready to go for us. Review four, we didn't actually have to hear, having read that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And the first thing we do is staff presents the file again. So if you've read it, it's been four and a half days. The first thing we'll do, we won't go into the detail of the staff report, cause some of those staff reports are like twenty-five pages. They'll do a, a fairly good overview. Um, feel free to look at, I, then first thing I would do about our senior students, look at a couple YouTube videos, the previous ones, and see how, how those staff reports go. And then, um, it's a, it's a good refresher, but.
Um, how many files are ready to go right now? That are ready, or they're, they have all their staff report finished and with the backlog currently?
So we, like I said, we're, we're working on the file for.
Okay, so you're doing nice, you're writing these out.
Yeah. Yeah, there's just.
Next week.
Yeah, yeah, there, there's just a lot going on with them. Like, the, one of the files that I'm working on, I'm still getting agency comment and public comment on it. And building that staff report, and I'll have that staff report finished tomorrow.
Okay.
There's, it's just, there's a lot, there's a lot to it.
I just didn't know that maybe like fifty that, that are all, everything's kind of done and they're just waiting for us. I didn't know we had a backlog here still. Working on next week's stuff.
Yeah, we, we probably, like I said, if you look at our, our files, there's probably sixty-five somewhere in process.
Okay.
You know, you probably have twenty-one scheduled for this hearing. Or for, for you guys, but because of that timeframe, you can't shift it one way or the other. It's, this is where it goes right now. We have twenty-one between now and June sixteen.
Yeah.
And our first meeting is April twenty-first.
Twenty-first is the, there's that killed it.
Yeah. So, but then again, back to this, um, so there's a couple, there's a couple of projects, files, types that trigger the comprehensive plan. One is a zone change. And, and so both statute, well statute especially talks about that a zone change. Uh, when we're doing a zone change, it has to show that, that there's not, uh, an increase or the agencies have to indicate that there's not an increase, uh, to their, that will hurt their service, ability to provide service. English. English language, right? So, um, so we will put the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan in the, in your file folder as well. So you'll have the opportunity to review those along with, with these, uh, file types. Staff will also review them. Uh, the other one is, uh, conditional use permits. Uh, conditional use permit has to be in accordance, in accord with, not accordance, but in accord with the comprehensive plan. So, so occasionally, like I said, in these two file types, uh, those questions will arise. Uh, and, and the question will be, has staff reviewed this against the comprehensive plan? And that should be in the staff report. Um, variance does not trigger comprehensive plan review. Subdivisions, um, depends. Based on if it's a P U D or whatever, so. Um,
And some of our files, we're, we're improving them a lot of ways, I'm making recommendations, right?
Yeah, so the zoning commission is the final decision on, on, uh, conditional use permits and variances.
Kind of a similar.
Yeah, unless, yeah, you have the final decision and, and we're done with it, the applicant has twenty-eight days to appeal to the board. Um, and that, that happens once in a while.
We make the decision. The board doesn't make the decision unless there's appeal, permit, and then it goes to the board, not back to us.
Correct. And those, and right now, those decisions are heard de novo. Those appeals are heard de novo in front of the board. We'll likely be changing that code in the new year.
We're assuming making decisions, not recommendations for certain.
Not, no, we, we'll change it to where the, the, if a person wants to appeal those decisions, they have to show where this zoning commission aired in their findings. Right now, it's a de novo hearing. You can appeal for any reason you want. But we're gonna, we're gonna tighten that up a little bit and, and ask the appellant to show cause. So, so it was that way for a while. Um, the, the zone changes and the subdivision files are just a recommendation. So a recommendation to the, to the board. Um, the, uh, and, and subdivisions, just that we'll only hear the preliminary plat. A preliminary plat goes to public hearing on a regular plat, so eleven or more lots. There's eleven or more lots subdivision that will come to here and then to the board. And then the final plat just gets processed and goes to the board. So. Um, it's a lot of information all at once. I appreciate the, the time. Um, what else? Sometimes I'll tell you about what's going on. All right. So this year, I, we're, we're down about sixteen permits over last year, a building location permits, but, um, last year we got rid of the declaration of exempt structure. So every permit now is a, a permit that has to be reviewed. So even though we're down sixty, we're probably even with the number of, uh, reviewed permits. So, um, so our revenues are up basically because of that. The, uh, N L Ds, I think I saw today number thirty-three. You know, after a hundred and ninety-eight last year, we're at number thirty-three. This is the slow season. Well, that number will still be high this year. Um.
Does it take more short plats as a condition now that?
I do, yeah. We, we anticipate more short plats, so. Um, we, we do have, uh, the county engineers are working on private road standard legislation and stormwater plans, so. Not that there'll be many changes, it'll just be easier to, to understand, so. Um, those don't come here, but those are some of the things that we're working on. The zone map is, has been completely updated with all of the zone changes. That'll be going to the board for reapproval here in the next few months, so. Um, uh, what else? You know, last year we did, we took thirty-eight zone change files. Not quite to here, because we're still finishing up a couple from last year, but I, I anticipate that will probably slow down this year.
Over yet twenty-one and twenty-two.
Zone changes, I think we're at seven or eight, right? Yeah. Uh, we are having, we are having a lot more conversations with folks about P U Ds, bigger projects. So I suspect we'll see some more of that this year.
With P U Ds coming for us.
Yeah, it's a conditional use permit, a P U D.
Right now, it's.
Okay, and.
That would be.
Yeah. Yeah. I also experienced a lot of building up on this site this year, or a share this year, which is very a big change. So I think that's gonna continue this year. Um, what, what other number was really high? I think there was, probably there was your crisis, really high, about a hundred and fifty. Yeah, hey, if folks want to know what's going on on the property, something, we pressed a copy of the B L P or. Yep. There you go, that's, uh, that's all I got. I wish you had some other questions. Yeah.
I know, typically I used to be able to, I don't know, I just, I just don't know if it's online after seeing some of the stuff on, I, I think we have a really good Bonner County website, like, in terms of, like, it's really nice, the G I S information's great, tons of good data there. Um, or is B L P information on that site?
I, uh,
Okay.
We're, we're actually going to the board Tuesday on executive session and ask them to let us purchase the citizens' self-serve software, so the citizens can have public, can have access to B L Ps.
Yeah, without coming here.
Without them coming here, right.
Will, will you, will we be, uh, putting plans on there and things like that?
Yeah, it'll be, so basically the applicant will be able to get online and have an account and sign in and, and, uh, yeah, input their permits online.
Like, is that a question of the section?
No, I don't know, I don't know all the tools that are available there, but. No, I don't know. I don't know all the tools that are available there, but it does open up that possibility.
Cause you can come down here and do that.
Yep.
So why does a lot of it?
Yeah. Yeah. Again, I don't, I don't understand all the possibilities of that software. I'm more interested in the fact that right now people are sending in permits by email and we're having to retype them into the system. So.
Just get it online.
Yeah. We'd like to get it online. So, yeah. Uh, that, that'll be a big deal. That, that software was part of the original package. We bought this current software. So it just got, it got tabled because we were, so we expended too much money back then. So it's not cheap.
Where are your rentals?
Yeah, well, yeah, these are definitely way different now. For sure. Yeah. Good question. I got something else?
As far as introductions go, we probably should start with that.
Thank you.
I thought about that like halfway into the meeting. Jenna is the hearing coordinator. You'll get a lot of emails from her. We have troubles with IT or your accounts or anything like that. Go through the Rattler range. She'll probably contact. So she's got your main point of contact when it comes to hearing files. Then you should have got me an email and didn't reach out. She's, she's the hearing coordinator. Her main job is just to coordinate all the hearings. So if you need guys on the board. So I'm the assistant director. I mean, I don't know, doesn't want to. Uh, you'll, you'll see a variety of different planners when they come through. So I'll make sure to introduce themselves to you guys before we, so if you didn't hear it ten minutes prior, that's great. Cause you can use that from, uh, it's why it's one of our partners.
Are you a member of the public?
I'm a journalist. I work at the newspaper, The Daily Beat.
Oh, great.
So when it's a big deal, you'll be seeing me.
Love your queue, right?
Yeah. So. So I don't know, six or eight months ago, the board asked us to start feeding the zoning commission because the plans are a portion of the, right, that we're doing. So, so if you have any suggestions, ideas, something you have before, let us, us know.
Some of the decisions you made, we'll look at that. So feel free. Suggestions are always appreciated.
Yeah.
How long do you think it'll take to get this one in?
So, yeah, District Two was the challenge. We, I think we got three letters of interest from District Two, maybe four letters of interest from District Two. Or we got seven or eight from District Three. So, um, yeah. I've asked the newspaper out there to, um, to write an article about it. Um, I need to ask this newspaper to write an article in their Wednesday paper. Cause that's the first river.
Yeah, coming up.
Yeah. So, yeah. Because we've, if we could get four or five or six applications from District Two, we, the board may, may consider other changes as well. So, because we need, we have two from District Two on the planning commission and one in District Two here. So. But it'd be good to have a, to have some more interest. We got, you know, we got eighteen letters of interest, which was pretty good. Um, I don't know. But as long as it was out there, I guess I would have hoped for it to happen now. It's all right. Yeah. Yep. Anything else?
Thanks, man.
Oh, hell yeah. Thank you guys. I hope this is, this will be good. All right.
So Mr. Cherry, this is where you, we want to continue the meeting until our next meeting is April twenty-first, twenty-first or twenty-second. Oh, and yeah, stay the time.
All right. So, uh, it's about six forty-five PM. And, uh, we'll adjourn this meeting until April twenty-first and then.